Good afternoon. Welcome to the Public Safety Meeting. I am the Chair, Mark Conway, Representative of the 4th District. Today, the Committee will have an oversight hearing for LO-25-0025 Underground Infrastructure Safety. In attendance today, we have Councilman Schleifer from the 5th District, Member of the Committee, Councilwoman Porter of the 10th District, Member of the Committee, and Councilwoman Gray, 8th District, Member of the Committee. Representing the Office of the President, I'm sure we got somebody here, and representing the Mayor's Office, I've got Tyler Shannella. So we'll jump right into it. LO-25-0025 Underground Infrastructure Safety, for the purpose of inviting relevant city agencies and utility providers, including but not limited to the Baltimore City Fire Department, the Department of Public Works, the Department of Transportation, the Office of Emergency Management, Baltimore Gas and Electric, Comcast, Verizon, and Vicinity Energy, to discuss the safety of Baltimore's underground conduit system in response to ongoing underground fires. This bill was introduced on July 7th, 2025, sponsored by myself. For those that are here, the intention today is first, safety. We have heard and are very familiar with a number of fires that we've been seeing underground that are, I'm sure the Fire Chief will tell us how difficult it is to manage when this does happen, that have been, in the past, a huge inconvenience, to say the least, but certainly a safety concern for folks downtown. Our last fire was on June 28th. We also had one at the end of last year, set on September 29th in 2024. And we had a hearing in November of last year where we tried to discuss this issue a little bit. We weren't able to get too many answers. It's my hope that today we'll have a decent discussion and a robust discussion about what the causes are behind the fire and that we can get to some sense of what we should then be doing about it. My biggest goal here is to make sure that we can ensure the safety of Baltimoreans who are living, working, and walking downtown. Our conduit is critical infrastructure for any number of reasons, but especially in instances where we're talking about safety. I want to make sure that we're doing everything in our power to ensure safety. We have a number of partners that operate within the conduit. Many of them are here today, well, actually, not many of them, probably just the largest is here today, but we have some of those partners in the room today. And I look forward to hearing from you guys on what's going on and how we are thinking about resolving those issues. I think this will have, I will have questions about how we plan on implementing changes in the conduit to ensure its safety and what that means for our agreement with BGE between the capital investments and maintenance investments. I think that's going to be really important as we look at the agreement that the city struck with BGE in 2023. And ultimately, I want to be able to walk away from this conversation with a little bit more certainty that we can ensure people's safety. So with that, I'm going to ask that the folks who are here from the agencies and from our partners that operate in and around the conduit that you introduced yourself. I'll start with our city agencies over here to the left. If you could please introduce yourself and the agency you represent.
Patrick Fleming, Chief of Staff, Baltimore City Department of Transportation.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Members of the Committee. Chief James Wallace, Baltimore City Fire.
Tyler Shannella, Deputy Director of Government Relations.
Joey Henderson, Director, Office of Emergency Management.
Khalil Zaid, WRE Mayor for Operations.
Josh Taylor, Field Services Manager, Conduit.
Ola Olamide, Conduit Division Chief.
If you could speak up a little bit into the mic.
Ola Olamide, Conduit Division Chief.
Thank you.
Tricia Keegan, Vicinity Energy.
Sumay Khindra, Vicinity Energy.
Good afternoon, Jeannie Morris, Vicinity Energy.
Good afternoon, Trace Beer with BGE.
Tom Rafferty, BG&E.
And Brittany Jones, BGE.
Excellent, thank you. All right, we are going to first jump into our agency reports. I'm going to actually turn it over to our Fire Chief to tell us a little bit about what we know and go from there. I take that back, I'll start with DOT before we get to the Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Members of the Committee. Again, my name is Patrick Fleming. I'm Chief of Staff of Baltimore City Department of Transportation, here today with some of my coworkers to provide a brief presentation about the conduit system. And then I'll be turning over to Fire Chief Wallace to discuss the response of the recent conduit fire. Next slide. Just an overview in this presentation, I will provide a brief overview of the municipal conduit system, how the system works, the benefits of the system, management of the system, BCDOT's response to emergency situations, and how we plan to move forward. Next slide. Some quick facts about the conduit system. The first ducts were installed about 125 years ago. After the Great Baltimore Fire, all aerial utilities were forced underground. The initial capital investment was $7 million. Currently, there are approximately 3.7 million feet of conduit in the system, and that's approximately 25 million feet of duct and 12,000 manholes. Next slide. The conduit system is a series of manholes linked together by underground conduit or ducts, forming a network to facilitate the delivery of power and communication services to city residents and visitors. This picture shows, the picture on the left shows the conduit being installed, and then the one on the right shows the construction of the manhole. Next slide. The purpose of the system is to provide pathways for electric communication and fiber optic cables. The system houses both public and private assets and has over 40 lessies. Next slide, please. The city leases duct space to tenants and charges a price per linear foot. Lease revenue is used to manage and maintain the system. Developer agreements are used to expand the system at no cost to the city. And then upon completion and inspection, the city assumes ownership of the conduit. Next slide. The picture on the top left shows a top-down view looking into a manhole. The picture in the middle and the picture on the right show a section of Orangeburg and Terracotta Conduit. These conduits are being replaced with more durable PVC ducts. Next slide. The benefits of the system include, but not limited to, the connectivity of the street infrastructure, including traffic signals and streetlights. City maintains oversight of activities within, this allows the city to maintain oversight of activities within the public right-of-way. Next slide. Underground utilities reduce the likelihood of storm-related damages, and we can achieve citywide mayoral initiatives like Be More Bright and Smart City. Next slide. The mission of the Conduit Division is to provide a reliable and efficient conduit system in a state of good repair. The Division is responsible for planning, designing, constructing, inspecting, leasing, and managing the system. Next slide. As part of the 2023 settlement agreement with BGE and BCDOT, BGE will invest $120 million over four years in lieu of lease fees. They also pay the city a $1.5 million annual maintenance fee. And the city still owns and maintains the conduit system. BGE uses funds previously paid to the city to reactively and proactively repair conduit obstructions, repair and replace conduit manholes, and design and construct new parallel conduit infrastructure. BCDOT continues, conduit manages the planning of where these construction efforts will take place and inspect the work while it is being performed. The city still maintains ownership of the conduit system. Next slide. During events in the conduit system, representatives from the Conduit Division go on scene immediately and coordinate with OEM and the Fire Department. Internal coordination occurs between conduit or safety, traffic, and maintenance divisions to support street closures, deployment of traffic enforcement officers, and restore functions of affected traffic signals. The Conduit Division coordinates with BGE and other lessies for repairs and remediation. Next slide. Moving forward, the city has retained the engineering firm RTI Group to perform a forensic engineering analysis of the Charles Street and Baltimore and South Street fires. Part of their analysis is to provide us with contributing factors to fires. We will then use this information to inform recommendations to guide our capital investments and reduce the likelihood of emergencies moving forward. I'll now turn this over to Fire Chief Wallace.
Good afternoon again, Chairman Conway and Members of the Committee. Chief Wallace, Chief of the Baltimore City Fire Department. You can go to the next slide. So on June 28th, 2025, at approximately 3:00 in the afternoon, units from the Baltimore City Fire Department were dispatched to the area of Baltimore and Guilford for a reported fire, an underground fire. When our units arrived, and you can see the picture there to the left, they did encounter heavy smoke and some fire from the manhole at Baltimore and Guilford, as well as additional heavy smoke that was being emitted from other manholes in that immediate area. It was a very dark-colored smoke, there was steam mixed in, there were a lot of products in there of combustion. That fire would eventually self-extinguish itself. We did not apply water. This particular type of a fire is very challenging for us. We can't use the conventional methods of applying water into highly energized areas. Obviously, that would result in electrocution of our responders. Additional city agencies, including OEM, to help organize and guide activities in subsequent hours, but they were requested to the scene as well. There were no injuries reported on this incident. However, as we all know, there was significant infrastructure impact that would follow in the subsequent days. Next slide. This is just a timeline of the Fire Department's activities. So just prior to 3:00, 911 calls began coming in. By 3:00, our units had not only been dispatched, but around 3:05 were actually on scene and had conducted initial assessments of that footprint itself. BG&E was quickly requested, as well as other utilities, known to have resources in those particular areas. And BG&E did respond. Again, our challenge always is, we cannot attack a fire like this until we're 100% certain that the utilities themselves have been secured. In the late afternoon and on into the evening, like I said, the fire had burned itself out. So the Fire Department's posture at that point is one of scene safety and security, as well as subsequent checks of area buildings, particularly their basements for the presence of carbon monoxide. We do that as a standard practice, we'll go through and make checks there. Eventually, we would transition the scene over through OEM to BG&E and then into Saturday night, and again, subsequent days that work continued. Next slide. This was a map that was requested of historical fires in the downtown area. This is, this gives you a five-year perspective, if you will. You'll see that in this particular map itself, it does indicate that in 2024, there was obviously an uptick of underground fires downtown. However, you see one or two each year in other years. And I believe that's the end of this presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chief Wallace. I want to welcome to the Committee Council President, Zee Cohen. And also, welcome to the Committee Vice Chair, Blanchard. Thank you. I understand we have a presentation from Vicinity. Is there anyone else presenting from the city side before we hand off to our private partners? All right, I'm going to turn it over to Vicinity.
Thank you, Chairman Conway, Members of the Public Safety Committee. I am Sumay Khindra, a proud District 11 resident and also the Government Affairs Manager for the Baltimore Vicinity Energy System. Here with me today, I have colleagues Tricia Keegan, our Senior Vice President of Operations, and Jeannie Morris, our Vice President of Government Affairs. So really wanted to start today to provide some background on our system in Baltimore, what we have going on here, and then also provide a little bit of background on the most recent fires, the most recent one in particular. And then my colleague Tricia here will provide some of the more technical context behind some of our operations that we have going on. So it's a brief overview, Vicinity operates in 12 major cities, Baltimore being one of them. Here in Baltimore, we provide steam, hot water, and chilled water through a series of underground pipes. And this eliminates the need for, the need for buildings to have their own chillers and boiling plants in their buildings. And so it's more efficient and helps reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Here in Baltimore, we serve over 30 million square feet of building, including both the stadiums, the aquarium, and some hospitals. So now moving towards what we're talking about here today with our safety and some of the recent issues we've had. As every city, including here at Baltimore, safety is our number-one priority. So as Tricia will add some color to, when she presents, we have regular maintenance schedules, we have regular repair schedules, we have robust safety and maintenance protocols, including a 24/7 manned response and call center and a two-hour maximum response time to any incident. So now moving towards those incidents, so hopefully going to provide some color on the most recent one and then to the other preceding incidents that occurred. So with the most recent incidents, we were on scene as soon as it occurred. We were there, we had a team on site. Our team on site took a look, and there's nothing that indicated, and there's nothing that's been presented to indicate that our system was involved directly or indirectly in that particular fire. In fact, our system was unharmed and remained fully operational during the incident and after the incident. And we provided that update to members of the Committee and other city stakeholders as soon as we could, the following Monday, to let them know that our system was in good shape and that there was nothing that we could tell that our system had done. But of course, as then and as continues to be the case, we are happy to be involved in the investigation, providing information that's helpful determining the root cause. Looking towards some of the other incidents that have occurred, the one that was referenced that occurred last year, again, the same case there, there's nothing that we have found or been presented with to indicate that our system was the direct or indirect cause of that incident. In particular, in that case, actually, on the Charles Street side, our system is on the exact opposite side of the road from the electrical infrastructure in the area. So again, just, you know, we really don't see any direct or indirect way in which we may have been involved with that fire last year. And then moving towards another incident in 2023 that got some attention. There again, we, from our understanding, there was another underground utility that was excavating and excavated through a marked water main, which caused issue when that water then touched our system. But that wasn't, again, something where we did anything to cause that harm. And so really, all through this, you know, again, we're sort of presenting how there really isn't anything that we can see that indicates our involvement directly or indirectly. I do want to make clear, we are not at all obfuscating our duty and our responsibility that we know to be true, that we have to be good neighbors in solving the safety issue. This simply can't keep occurring. And we really do want to be partners in making sure that whatever we can do as a city, we can make sure that all the underground infrastructure partners are working together to resolve this issue. We just want to make sure that we're not attributing blame to the steam system when the really, when the root cause investigation hasn't even really started yet. But to that end, we are happy to be a part of and welcome the opportunity to break down silos, be more transparent, really make sure all the infrastructure partners are working together to make sure our underground infrastructure is safe. With that, I'll quickly turn it over to our Vice President of Operations, Tricia Keegan.
Thank you very much, Chairman Conway and the rest of the Councilmen and Women for having me here today to represent Vicinity Energy. My name is Tricia Keegan, I'm the SVP of Operations for Vicinity Energy. In my role, I oversee the operations, maintenance, and strategic planning for our systems. These district energy systems include other major cities as well. But we ensure the efficient production and reliable distribution of steam to our clients, hot water, chilled water, critical infrastructure. The city of Baltimore has a lot of critical customers on our system. Our daily operations in Baltimore are spearheaded by a team of engineers and technicians who maintain the integrity and safety of the 28 miles-plus of underground infrastructure. And we saw some of the photos, it takes very brave, talented, well-trained individuals to do the work they perform in those areas. To add a little color to Sumay's overview of our safety and maintenance protocols, I want to highlight a few specific processes we employ. A critical part of our safety protocols include engaging with missed utility. Before we excavate, we always contact them, or our contractors do, to identify the underground utilities. This helps to ensure that the underground infrastructure is clearly marked and protected. With the age of it, we always identify if there's any discrepancies and document them. In addition, our manholes are inspected twice a year to catch and address potential issues early. In the case of emergencies, we have a manned response center that's staffed 24/7, and we have protocols to respond within two hours. We identify with unified command and really appreciate Chief Wallace and the other first responders and the duties they do to protect our workers and the city. Emergency responders have direct contact information for our center, and that enables seamless coordination. We can enhance that going forward with the Operations Office of Emergency Management as well, strengthening our relationship with them. As Sumay highlighted, the two most recent underground fires were not caused by our system. There have been no findings in the most recent incident that our system was directly or indirectly involved. And in fact, our system remained fully operational and unharmed. In regards to the last year's incident, our system was across the street from where the incident occurred, as Sumay had mentioned. The electrical infrastructure where the incident occurred is on the west side of Charles Street, and the steam system is on the east side, separated by several feet. In 2023, the Mother's Day specifics, there was a different utility doing an excavation, and the interference with the water main contributed to the steam incident. So thank you again to this Committee for hosting us today at this hearing. I'm happy to answer any questions related to the testimony or Vicinity's operation within the city.
Thank you. I failed to mention, also in attendance, we have representation from Comcast. What I'll do is, if BGE would like to add anything to this, I'll offer you that opportunity now, and likewise for Comcast since they're here. But BGE, please.
Sure, Mr. Chair, thank you so much for having us. I just want to really emphasize BGE's continued commitment to safety. That's why we're all here today. That dedication rings true for definitely our company. We know that's what you're all about, that's why we're here. So any way that we can continue to aid to the investigation that's being led by the Fire Department, we're all in. Couple things that I just want to highlight.
Can you just say your name again?
Oh, yeah, so sorry, I'm sorry. Brittany Jones, Director of Government and External Affairs for BGE. We want to be a part of the solution, and we know that this is going to be an all-in effort. We have continued inspection practices for our infrastructure and fully respect that Baltimore City owns the conduit system. We're in a unique position where we have a conduit agreement in place where we can help the city with that modernization effort that's desperately needed. We know the condition is really deteriorating in the conduit. So just a couple of quick facts of ways that we've been able to help the city with this effort. We've been installing 264,000 feet of new conduit, and that's happened in just two years and two months. I know DOT pointed out earlier today the massive size of your conduit system, being more than 3 million feet. We have a lot of work to do. BGE is not solely responsible or even capable to modernize this entire system, but I want you to know that you have a partner here, and that we're going to do our part and help you every step that we can.
Thank you. And I understand we have Don here from Comcast. Don, is there anything you'd like to add? Thank you, thank you for coming, Don, and if we have questions, I'll let you know. To that end, I will open up two questions from the Committee, starting with our Council President, Zee Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to all the folks from within government, outside of government, that have joined us here today on this really important topic. Thank you to my colleagues on the Council. We know that we have aging infrastructure, we have very old pipes, we're an old East Coast city. We also know that we have an obligation to make sure the conduit, the pipes, the underground does not explode and that residents can feel safe and secure, whether they're downtown or whether they're in whichever neighborhood, knowing that they are not going to be facing an imminent fire from underneath the ground. We also know that these incidents cause enormous financial distress to our business community, to us as a city, when these types of incidents impact the flow of people that are able to move around. So my question, and I don't want to be overly reductive, but there are a lot of partners in this system. Who is in charge and who ultimately bears responsibility for fixing it?
The Department of Transportation owns and maintains the conduit system, and so we are leading the charge on coordination and collaboration to make sure that it is as safe as possible and to provide that assurance to folks.
Can you talk a little bit more about what that actually looks like to coordinate this kind of effort? Because I think in a lot of these issues where there are multiple government and non-governmental partners sort of occupying the same space, it can be, we can see duplication of efforts, we can see finger pointing. Talk to me about how DOT is driving the fixes and the long-term safety of this system.
I'd be happy to do that, I'm going to actually turn it over to my coworkers, Ola Olamide, the Division Chief, who coordinates those things.
Yes, my name is Ola Olamide, the Conduit Division Chief. So when these fires occur, we coordinate with the different utilities, and most of the time, BGE is given the first, I guess, first steps to go in and remove the cables, do any, you know, construction, any rehabilitation. And we just go down the line. BG has the chance to go in, and the next one up could be Comcast, it could be, yes. So that's, that's pretty much, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So we do have monthly meetings with BGE where we go over, you know, any trouble spots. We discuss the capital plan for upgrading the system. And we just follow the, you know, everything that's listed in the BG agreement.
Khalil Zaid, WRE Mayor for Operations. I wanted to refer to your first question, Mr. President. And I want unequivocally say that this is our system, this is our asset. We own it, and we're responsible for it, and we're making sure, we're going to make sure that it is a healthy, valid, good system throughout. So, just to make it very clear.
Deputy Mayor, I truly appreciate that, and it's good to see you in this role, sir. I think where I've heard an enormous amount of concern from residents downtown, from business owners downtown, is that in these situations, we've seen a lack of overall coordination. It's felt like folks have not received timely or effective communication. It's felt like it's a little bit unclear who is responsible for what, who's on first, who's on second. And so, again, if you could drill down a little bit into, in this type of situation, how are we managing it and how are we managing the communication? And then if you could, as part two of that question, talk about the long-term fix so that we're not constantly responding and triaging when there's explosions?
I'll be talking about the communication as far as we're moving forward. What are we going to be doing moving forward? Making sure that in case of any incident like this one, we'll make sure that all the residents, all the businesses are informed of the situation, whether it's directly or indirectly. As far as thinking about what are we going to need to do for the future, in terms of what are we doing to prevent that from happening again? We're going into a study, as the presentation have indicated. We're bringing in an expert. This expert will look at the details, will look into it. As a matter of fact, this week, they're going to be doing, going inside the manholes, looking inside, making sure that is, we get to the bottom of this, what really happened. A lot of people could say a lot of things about what happened in this specific incident, but until we know the detail, we know what is exactly inside that, happened inside that manhole. We'll get to that, we'll coordinate with BGE, we'll coordinate with all the other conduit holders inside, and we're making sure, we're going to make sure, that incident like this one, I'm not going to say it's never going to happen again, but we're reducing the factor that is, or the percentage that incident like this one will happen again.
I appreciate that, and I want to thank Councilman Blanchard here. I appreciate that, and I want to thank Councilman Blanchard here, who has really been excellent and on the ground, working to coordinate with communities and partners and business and all the folks who've been impacted, as well as the Chair of this committee for holding this hearing and bringing folks together. What I am hoping comes out of this is that we are much tighter in our coordination, that there is a real communications plan, both internally within government and to BG and to vicinity, but equally important to our residents who are living down here, to our longtime legacy businesses that have invested so much in this city. My hope coming out of this hearing is that if there is a next time, which I hope there is not, that you, that we, the city of Baltimore, are able to present a much clearer, cleaner plan for what is going to occur to fix it. And I appreciate you bringing on RTI. I look forward to following up. I know this committee will certainly be following up, but again, I think there was a few drop balls, to say the least, in terms of how action was communicated to the various stakeholders, and this is an opportunity for us to do better, and I think our residents deserve nothing less. And again, I appreciate you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may also add to the Council President's point around what the comms has been to businesses. The Downtown Partnership of Baltimore worked with Deputy Mayor Williams and his team to expedite permits to get the businesses back open. We also are currently undergoing, there's a campaign, Charles Street is open, where we're providing free marketing to those impacted businesses on billboards downtown to try to drive that traffic to those businesses since they were impacted by a fire, underground fire.
No, and absolutely appreciate that. Appreciate Director Stokes and Deputy Mayor Williams. You know, we got to push, we got to make sure folks are still coming downtown, and I know there was a tremendous amount of frustration among those business owners about the duration at which they were closed, about not being clear about when they were going to be able to get back open up. And so, again, I think there is a lot of lessons to be learned, but I do appreciate subsequent efforts to drive traffic to our businesses. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to take us back a little bit, because I think things have to progress from a certain perspective until we can figure out what our next steps are here. And I want to thank DOT and the Deputy Mayor for giving me some, an early briefing on kind of what's going on. In my mind, I'm no expert on fires, I'm going to leave that to the fire chief. There are only so many things that can set a fire. And so, we know what can cause a spark, we know what can then lead to a fire. In my mind, in order for us to ensure the safety and security of folks downtown, around where we have our conduit, we have to understand what can cause a fire, especially within our conduit. The components and the various things that can then lead to a fire. So, my starting question here is, knowing we have some limitations, can you tell me what we do know about what led to this fire, and what may be the components for fires in the conduit that we are seeming to have to deal with any number of times a year? Sure.
And thank you for the question, sir. I think that, well, I don't think it's well-known, you know, we need heat, we need some type of a product, we need an ignition source. These particular fires, the, what was burning, what was actively burning, where the flames were being emitted, is at the very least the wiring and the cable. The challenge with us is, when we arrive at these, normally, the power arcs, the power flashes are so strong, and in a lot of cases, so violent, that we actually, we can't get up on this hole and take a look at it. Oftentimes, it also will either initially involve more than one manhole, or it'll begin to migrate, and it'll migrate by way of the conduits. So, one of the fires back in 2018, I was actually on, I was a field officer, and it was migrating from hole to hole until we could actually get the power shut off. Then the challenge is, how do we get to that fire, right? It's in the conduits, you saw the pictures there, some of the conduit tubes are small. How do we get to that? So, I think what's oftentimes, is the challenge is, what caused this to start? What caused this to happen? And that's where we are today. We're trying to narrow down on that one particular piece. That's why I, you know, I really applaud the administration for bringing in a forensic investigator, because I think when you look at these things forensically, there are oftentimes things that when we investigate just normal fires, we may send things out to labs and things like that. This is not a case where we can do that. So, a more deeper dive, a more scientific forensic look is warranted, and again, you know, applaud the administration for bringing in that help for us.
Yeah, I understand RTI is doing that third-party investigation. Do we have any sense of how long it might take for them to? We have no sense.
We expect probably mid to late fall to have findings from them.
That's very helpful. Now, I ask that question because there's no way for us to guarantee safety if we don't know what then leads to a fire. And Chief Wallace, you explained some of the complications that come from fighting a fire underground. You can't get to the manholes. You mentioned the arcs. Are you suggesting that because power is still running through these lines, you're still dealing with the electrical considerations, or is there something else here?
So, when we see those arcs, if you've ever seen one, you'll never forget it. It's, those arcs can be very loud, they're very violent, but even if we don't see them, we will absolutely treat equipment as though it's energized until we are told by the carrier that it is not, and it's 100% secure.
When you say arcs, you mean electric?
Electrical arcs, yes, underground. But we will not, first of all, we don't put anybody below ground in a situation like that to fight a fire. That's all done above, you know, at grade, right? No subsurface fire fighting there. But again, we will not attack that fire, at least with water, until we are 100% sure that the electrical source down there has been secured.
Yeah. I don't know if we're able to talk about what we think exactly is causing that initial spark, but I'm curious if we can talk a little bit about what we believe are some of the solutions to resolve some of the causes of fires? Can we share that at all, or is there any insight that we can provide about how we're looking at solving the causes of the fires? My goal here, once again, is not only do I want to make sure that we understand what's going on, but that we also have a plan to resolve the causes behind the fire, so if you could.
Yeah, I think that, once we get the report back, that'll really tell us what the factors that we need to account for are, and that will be able to allow us to inform our coordination meetings with BGE and our other partners to focus the improvements moving forward. So, we'll use that as our, you know, as our guiding principle.
I asked the question, so I'm asking because I want to know, does this require upgrades to the conduit in some way, shape, or form?
I would, yes, I would assume.
I'm assuming so.
I can't say for certain, like, I really want to allow their analysis to determine what actually needs to be done, and that will inform what it is. If it's improvements, upgrades, whatever that is, that will determine it for us.
We all understand, as we look at this conduit system, it's an old conduit system. So, it's, and the infrastructure, as we think about it, we're talking about roughly 16, 17 million linear feet of conduit throughout the system. So, it's a tremendous big system that is, we're investing in, and we're going to continue to invest. So, in terms of upgrades, in terms of investment, it's definitely needed. In addition to all of that, what I'd like to add also, it is the coordination that we have with the tenants, and specifically BGE, it is very critical in order to make sure that this system is healthy, and this system is safe, and we're going to continue on doing that. What are we doing also, we're going to continue on doing, but doing maybe more, is an inspection inside those manholes that we go inside and figure out what is needed inside those manholes. One of the things that we're going to be doing is probably measuring, if there is a gas leak, we're going to be measuring the temperature of some of those manholes as we go inside, and recording all of these issues as we move forward. So, it's definitely a little bit of an additional attention is going to be needed, specifically to the system downtown and around the areas that we think is more susceptible to these kind of fires.
And when we're thinking about the potential upgrades, how do we determine, in light of the 2023 agreement with BGE, who is responsible for that? Are these considered capital investments, and therefore, it'd be covered under BGE? Or is this considered maintenance? How would we sort of look at this?
Yes, so, anything that we need to do to upgrade the system will be considered capital improvements. Conduit Division meets with BGE every month, and we, at the beginning of a fiscal year, we present to them the potential locations that we would like them to upgrade, and based on the funding, they have to do the assessment to see what the cost is, the engineering, but that's the process. We work together with BGE and come up with other corridors.
Okay. And for BGE, is that covered within our agreement?
The current agreement has $120 million allocated over a four-year span, so just to give you a sense of where we are, we've spent $75 million to date, so that would give us a remaining $44 million that would be spent by the end of 2026. So, we are very happy to partner and continue partnering with the city to modernize the system with the capital improvements, but I just want to be really clear, the current agreement is not going to solve for everything. That needs to be corrected.
Got it.
Excuse me, nothing prevents the city from investing additional money above $120 capital. So, nothing prevents the city from spending additional money on capital investments as well. $120 million is just a portion of BG's participating in. So, the city can, by all means, it's their system, they can, the City Council can fund them, and they can do more condo work.
To that effect, would the, would the capital investments have any impact on rates?
Just as, so, the way that it's worked traditionally is that if we're paying the conduit fee, as all the other occupants do, that lease cost is strictly O and M. That's dollar-for-dollar rate recovery from all BGE customers. The benefit of this type of agreement is that it does go to a capital expenditure, so it reduces the monthly expense to ratepayers. So, real-time cost savings, about $56 million to ratepayer benefit.
Explain that to me again. So, in the current agreement, BG sent the city $120 million in the first phase one of the agreement, and that would be used for capital investments. We have roughly $44 million remaining out of that.
Correct.
That may or may not cover the investment that we need to make in the system, but it is a start. We know we have a phase two, that's a part of the agreement, that we'll have to consider when we get to that piece.
Absolutely, and we'd love to keep going forward.
And the question for me is, does that investment have any impact on rates? The piece here is, we know that capital investments allow BGE to charge a premium on top for those investments, a 9.5% premium?
I think you're talking about the rate of return.
Sure, but when BG makes capital investments, it's not a dollar-for-dollar cost-by-cost increase.
Because you can spread it out over the life of the asset.
But it's amortized over 50 years.
Right. And that's a helpful mechanism, as we're all focused on affordability and helping customers with bill relief, doing that change is immediate benefit.
The question for me is, does that affect rates? How does it affect rates? Is that clear, the question?
Yes, yes, absolutely. And what we would say is, again, the benefit of going from O and M, dollar-for-dollar cost recovery, that's more substantial for a ratepayer on their monthly bill versus doing the capital expense, because then that cost burden is spread out over the life of the asset, as you said, over 50 years, rather than paying for real-time cost recovery. So, real-time benefit is a savings to ratepayers of $56 million.
I don't mean to beat a dead horse here, but I think that the piece that I'm alluding to is, as a capital investment, BG charges a premium on top of that capital investment. We know this is a critical thing, we know we absolutely need to do to ensure the safety and long-term viability of our conduit system. We know we're going to do this, whatever it may be, once we get back the recommendation from RTI. We don't know yet how large of an investment that will be, but this is going to be critical for the businesses and the safety of folks who are operating and moving around downtown. What I'm saying is, we already have the agreement for $120 million, $44 million is remaining. Has that already been baked into our rates, or would this further investment mean additional costs in our rates? Amortized over 50 years, still an additional cost within our rates? That's what I'm asking.
For the remaining balance?
Yes.
Keep me honest, I think it's already built in.
So, the original 120 was in our part of our NYPD, so it's in there.
So, the original 120 is built in, so anything after this remaining 44 would then be an additional discussion about going into the rates?
Go ahead, Tom.
Right, so, you know, and I'm not an accountant by any means, I'm more of the, you know, subject matter expert for the condo work itself, but if you were going to charge me $30 million a year in rent, instead I'm invested in capital. So, if you're going to start me $30 million in rent, and then you did the work, I'm going to be charging the customers any of that money recovery this year, right? Whereas if I'm doing $120 million capital, it's going to be expended over a longer term, therefore, the customer's not getting, hitting up with that larger sum of the bill upfront. That's the main difference.
So, either way, there's rate impact. If it's the O and M, that rent structure, that's the $30 million annually that we'd be paying either way to the city, and that's subsidized through all ratepayers.
Okay. I think what I hope we can consider, because we don't know yet how big this cost will be.
Sure.
It may be within the $44 million, and we can solve this, and it's not a significant change. We may just be doing less over the expanse of our system. Nonetheless, I think what I want to think about, knowing the pressures that we're seeing on the rate side, we figure out some way not to have it be an additional cost on ratepayers, that we not charge that 9.5%. I want to urge you guys to consider that, knowing the pressures that we already have on rates. I know we still have to consider the safety ramifications here, and we know we want to make sure that we can ensure the viability of the conduit. I want to make sure we do that, but I want to make sure we balance the consideration for ratepayers, and that's a request. You guys can chew on it. I'm going to hand off to my Vice Chair, Councilman Blanchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I'm going to ask about the investigation and the timing and whatnot, and there's a decent chance that these are things that Deputy Mayor Zaid has already explained, but I'm not an expert in this, and so it might have gone over my head if you had talked through it. And I just kind of briefly, being the council member for downtown, I just want to point out, going back to specifically the impact, particularly on the ground-level retail businesses that are so important to downtown. We know that Diva's bookstore basically had to replace their entire inventory right before Christmas. McO'Shea's lost over $100,000 in revenue. I mean, you know, the 300 block of North Charles is one of the more vibrant blocks of downtown, you know, our downtown has a lot of challenges, and this was just such a real kick in the stomach. And so, just with this whole conversation, it's less about assigning the blame than it is about just making sure that this type of thing gets prevented from happening again. And I just wanted to state that, but so... And I just wanted to state that. But so, probably for the deputy mayor, but so what is the, it feels like a lot of this conversation can't be had until we get the results of the investigation. So when, first question, when are we going to have the results of the investigation?
Yeah, we'll have it probably mid to the end of fall, so later this year.
Okay. And with that, what exactly does the investigation, like what is going to be physically happening during the investigation?
Go ahead.
Thanks, Councilman. Stephen Salisbury, Deputy City Solicitor. I just wanted to chime in here because we had worked with RTI, who we brought on. They've been boots on the ground. They got into the system, I think, in the beginning of this month, early July. We've talked to them. The hope is that we could have something early fall, maybe even by the end of September in the way of findings and recommendations. Your question, what does that look like? They're going into the conduit system. They're looking at debris that has burned to try and, they're looking at documents, they're looking at inspection reports to basically try and identify the cause of both the most recent fire and the fire on Charles Street from late last year. I think, as the fire chief can speak to, these are incredibly complicated and difficult investigations to do because of the damage that's been done to the infrastructure. But that work will, is underway, and the hope is to have that done sometime in September. And the, the goal will be to have both a set of findings and recommendations that we can share with the council.
Okay. So this is, I'm imagining like a robotic snake going through the conduits and taking much photos, everything, or?
I think they're physically going down. They're also, I understand, they're using like an infrared gun to go and measure temperatures. They're looking at materials that have come out and that have burned, in addition to looking at inspection reports and other documents to conduct the investigation.
Okay. Thank you. The, will all, this might actually be a question for Salisbury. I don't know. Will, will the results of the report be fully available to the public?
Yes. I mean, the idea is to share both a set of findings and recommendations with the council. And if the council chooses to share that with the public, then that'll be up to the council.
Okay. That's, that's great to know. Thank you. Thank you for that info. And then the, so that's, that's one portion of this conversation of what, clearly what's going on with the investigations. On the other side, with inspections, so can we talk about the, what the pattern of inspections were for the infrastructure prior to, I guess it was the 2023 fires?
Yeah. So what we do is, we do reactive inspections. You know, the, the city, the way, the way Conduit Division is set up, most of our, if not, sorry, all of our inspectors, they're either inspecting developer agreement work out there with LSEs, you know, BGE, Comcast, Cronkite, when they pull cable through the system. So, but during those inspections, if we open up a manhole, we would check the manhole, visually inspect for any defects, look at the roof, the walls, the floor. And if they're, if they observe anything, they would, you know, put that in as an SR, and we would go back and investigate. And if there's a need for repairs, then that goes into the pile of, or the pool of potential work. So it's mostly a reactive. We don't have a program for proactive inspections.
So reactive inspections, meaning after an incident occurs?
Well, okay. So let me take that back. So the inspections, the inspections are tied to when LSEs access a manhole. So maybe reactive isn't the right word to use, but we, when a LSE pulls a permit to maybe pull cable from point A to point B. So those are the avenues or the, you know, the periods that we get to inspect the manhole.
Okay. Every time somebody goes into the system.
Got it. So whether it's.
That's when we do the inspections.
Comcast, or Verizon, or BGE, or whoever?
Correct. Anybody, any of our partners.
And at minimum, we're talking about 15 to 20 a day. At some point, you're looking at it right now while it's reactive, but you're thinking about 15 to 20 a day that it happening all the time. Someone are looking at something, one of those, because someone is pulling cable at some point.
So how many, how many inspectors do we have?
Sorry. Currently, we have five city inspectors and 10 consulting inspectors.
Okay. So probably my last question. The, I think that it's not a coincidence that downtown, because this is probably the oldest, some of the oldest conduit in the country, probably not a coincidence that it's dense, it's old, that this is where this is more complicated to happen in. Would it be, would it be beneficial potentially to be having proactive inspections in these high-risk areas?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I guess, and follow-up question, do we have a plan in place to start having proactive inspections in these high-risk areas?
We'll have to do so. Actually, we're going to be able to develop some plans to, in order to get into some of those manholes, the downtown area manholes, and to develop some proactive ways to check some of those manholes. Yes.
Okay. In that case, then, Ms. Chair, I'd like to make a committee request, potentially, could within, let's say, two weeks from today, having a, a plan communicated as to what, what the proactive inspections would look like?
In two weeks, yes. I think we can have, we can give you the outline of that plan is, but not the exact location, because that would require a lot of.
Sure.
Details. But we could give you the outline of that plan within two weeks.
Okay. Okay. Awesome. All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as a point of clarity before I get into my question for Vicinity, the June 28 incident, you're saying that one, is that the one you were referencing when you were saying that your assets were not involved in that fire?
So to be clear, with the most recent incident, when we had crews on the ground who were there to see what was happening, there was nothing at that time that our crew saw that indicated that our system was involved. So there's nothing that we have seen ourselves when we responded to the incident that indicated our system was a part of it. And on top of that, as I mentioned, our system operate, there was no change in our operations. Our system wasn't harmed. There was no, so all the factors that we see and that we saw the day of indicate that there was nothing that our system contributed to that. But of course, as the report comes out, as, as the investigation continues, we're happy to be a part of it. If there is something that comes up, we're happy to be a part of that discussion. I was just, I just wanted to provide the initial assessment that we had from our crew that responded the day of, and the fact that our system maintained its regular operations throughout it, sort of again, indicates it wasn't harmed, wasn't, doesn't seem to have been a part of it. But of course, like I said, happy to continue that conversation, and especially with, in light of the report when it comes out.
Got you. Because that's pretty, it's pretty bold to get into that while the investigation is still going, simply because while we're talking about Vicinity, many of us here, we park in this vicinity. We park often in that parking garage across the street. And then when we go to ballgames, we also park in the vicinity of the last steam-related incident across from Camden Yards. In fact, I was actually, took my daughter to the game, parked right there where that explosion, or whatever you want to call it, took place soon after, which is, which is quite concerning that these incidents are happening. And one thing that I can tell you, just because we've all witnessed this, you know, I've witnessed it over the past decade, is when you pull out of the parking garage over there, there is so much steam coming out of there, and it's only gotten larger over the years. I remember pulling in, you know, as a new councilman, you know, I guess around 10 years ago, and it was, it was a little bit. But now you go out, you can't even, you can't even see down the street because there's so much steam coming out of there. So I just have to assume that the heat and steam related that is pouring out from that spot, the exact spot where this picture is showing where that is, obviously, there's something that needs to be looked into there related to the steam there. And it's also very concerning to me because what we see also when we pull out of there is oftentimes unhoused individuals actually sleep right there because there is so much heat coming out of there and all the steam coming out of there. It's probably one of the warmest, it's definitely warmer than Florida. And so it gets me to my, my primary question, and I hadn't really thought about it until, you know, these incidents started taking place. But what is the reporting mechanism? Because in hindsight, it kind of looks like seeing that increase in steam feels like, you know, people should say something. So what is the reported mechanism, reporting mechanism to you guys? Who is it reported to? Like, is this 911? Is it to Vicinity? Do you guys have a 800 number? How does it work? And then how do you inspect after the case? So if you can just walk me through that entire process.
Yeah, no problem. Just, I just, so my colleague here, Tricia, will get into the specifics of the reporting structure. Just to quickly address the steam that you see coming out of the ground, I just want to highlight the cause of that oftentimes is rainwater condensation that is causing that to, to, to rise. We had crews on the, on the scene there that, you know, just, that didn't seem to indicate that that was the cause of that specific incident. But again, we are happy to be a part of that discussion if it goes forward, whatever the report comes out. To be like I said, we're, we're not trying to obfuscate responsibility. We're here to be good neighbors, to be good stakeholders and everyone else. So we're more than happy to be a part of it, if the discussion comes out of that report. And to your point again, with the steam coming out in that specific area, a lot, a lot of the steam you see coming out of the manholes around the city has to do with, with water. When there's a lot of rain and it gets underground, there's, there's condensation that occurs and it comes back out in the form that you see in the manholes. That's oftentimes what you're seeing there, just to sort of put a bow on that. But my colleague Tricia here will sort of explain what our reporting mechanism is when we do have an incident.
Yeah. Before we get to that, can you just elaborate a little bit? So is there some type of meter or measurement that you can take to say, you know, there's this much steam coming out from this location versus, because I'm telling you, over the years, it has only gotten bigger. And so rain, no rain, it's, it's been getting, it's been getting significantly stronger at this location, the exact location of this fire.
Yep.
So do you guys have a measurement of that? And can we get access to that?
Yeah, I can't speak to the access, but I know that Tricia can speak to sort of the measurements and what we have going on in the system in terms of how we monitor our steam.
Thank you. You're referring to the, the apparent electrical fire that occurred in this past June?
Well, I don't know what kind of fire it was because it's under investigation, but I'm talking about, yeah, the June 28th, right across the street.
Okay. We will take that away, but to answer one question was about contacting Vicinity Energy. We have a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week manned call-in center, and it has a phone number 410-625-4555. And we can take calls there. It's our customer service center. As far as seeing apparent vapor coming from the ground?
Well, first, just to finish that, that line off, how is it inspected when somebody calls into this number?
Oh, okay. Thank you. We have a distribution team, and the distribution team is formed with engineers and technicians that are trained in all safety procedures, et cetera, and mechanical experts that go out in the system and evaluate the condition. And when they evaluate that condition, they try to determine what is the source of the apparent vapor coming out of the manhole, the, the grading. And when they go to investigate it, we can add blowers into the manhole to allow access, and the blowers will sometimes dissipate the, the presence of the steam. The other thing that we could do is we insert pumps into the vault or the manhole, and we pump the groundwater out. So groundwater can be a source, stormwater. Stormwater, a lot of this infrastructure that was built 100 years ago, and thank goodness, because it's pretty impressive that it's still in service today. But stormwater runoff is another part of that. Water tables changing, construction in an area can impact the groundwater table. But when water comes in contact with our hot steam pipes, that water can vaporize off and create an apparent steam. You might see it on a sunny day, you might see it a few days after it rained. The source could be a water, city water main leaking in the area, a sewage leak. So because all this underground infrastructure is close together, we first determine, is it steam coming out of the pipe? If it's steam leaking out of the pipe, then we have an issue with our, our system. It might be a flange that's leaking, or a drain trap, or we have these steam traps that remove any moisture from our steam. They're actually called steam traps, and they trap the water. So we don't want to have water in our system. We want to have steam in our system. If we have water in our system, it can act almost like a bullet, you know, and that's, that's what can contribute to water hammer, is a phenomenon that happens in steam systems if the steam collapses and turns to water. So we have traps that can remove excess water. It's all engineered. And if you see vapor coming out of an area, the source may be all the number of water sources we talked to flashing off our pipe, or it could be a leak from our pipe. And once we determine that, that's a corrective action we have to take. We might reach out to another utility and say, look, it looks like you have a city water leak here, and we work with the water department to figure that out. And who needs to impose what corrective action? But sometimes we're imposing a corrective action and making a fix, a weld repair, a small component that has to be replaced, a flange that needs to be replaced, we'll plan an outage and take the steam out of surface to do that.
So you, you mentioned a lot in that. And so, you know, this is the first time I'm ever hearing of this phone number. I don't know if it's the first time my colleagues are also hearing of this phone number. It seems, it seems like we should know more about this. Do you guys market this? Is this something that you guys can send us material around this to market it? I know that when there's a water leak, everybody knows who to call, right? I see, I see the city folks shaking their head. So like, when there's a gas leak, water leak, people know who to call. I never knew this, this line existed. So I think that's important for you guys to get us over that information. And as far as these blowers are concerned that you do, and I understand, you know, the, the steam stuff you're talking about, I did very well in, in science and math. Those are my two main subjects. And so are those blowers electric or gas?
The blowers are typically used in a temporary fashion, and that's to allow humans to enter the space safely. So when we use a blower, it could, it's typically electric if we have a, a source to plug into, just like a 120 outlet. And we just get that airflow in there enough to get the space cleared for a confined space entry.
And, and if you don't have access to electric, do you bring a generator or do you use gas?
We don't use gas. Gasoline, do you mean, or natural gas?
Any, any, any form of gas that's not electric.
Okay. We might use a temporary compressor. Sometimes you see them on wheels, like a two-wheel cart. And it's a small compressor that could be typically driven by like liquid fuel, but it's to compress the air to put the fresh air source into the space. Typically in the city, we can get access to electrical outlets.
Okay.
Or bring a small generator to plug into ourselves.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chair, just, if we can just make an official committee request to get marketing material around where to report potential steam leaks and steam-related, and just information about that so that when we're noticing things increasing like we've seen right across the street, that people know that this is something that's worthwhile to report, and who to report it to, and how it's followed up on, that would be, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Sorry. We can absolutely do that. That's not a problem. And then we will make sure that this committee and all members of city council and your staff has contact information for myself as the Vice President of Government Affairs and my colleague Samay. So that in the event, you can't get through on the, on the hotline, you'll have direct access to us. And I apologize that you don't have it already.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Can I add one thing to that?
Sure.
We're also going to make sure all of our first responders have that current number, and the Operations Emergency Management Group does as well.
Thank you. Councilman Porter?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I want to kind of talk about new technologies that other cities are using as it relates to. other cities are using as it relates to, um, different fire detection, particularly underground fire detections. Um, and so for, for the city, have we considered any type of AI, um, camera mechanism to use for these underground fires? Cause I looked through the agreement that was here and I wasn't really clear or any type of additional equipment and/or, um, technologies that could be used.
So cameras to evaluate fires as they're happening?
Yeah. So one of the, one of the, um, one of the cities in question, um, they use AI powered underground fire detection. So they use real time monitoring, 24 hour surveillance. And also they're able to, with the sensor mechanism to central, I mean, to, um, have that exact localization of the issue and where it is in the conduit system. It seems like speaking with a few of you, we don't know kind of where it is and we have to wait until the, um, we have to wait until the issue subsides before we send our people down to really look at and look at where the issue arises, which I'm all in favor for. I'm not saying that. So for public record.
So, so I can speak through the fire, fire department perspective. We don't have anything subsurface that, that detects, you know, well before it shows itself, right? We do have underground camera technology. However, what, what I have is, is really more for collapse, trench collapse rescue. It would, would not stand up to the kind of heat that's, that's being emitted from these fires.
Yeah. And Chief, I appreciate that. The only reason why I bring this up is because in order for us, and this kind of goes into the workflow of preventative maintenance, if there is a way that we can develop a sensor mechanism that if something goes over a certain threshold, it signals to you all that something is wrong, that there may be an issue that we have to investigate, but it also signals to the partners that there may be something within their, within their system that they have to address as well. So Deputy Mayor, is that something that we can look to, to add to this agreement?
We can look into this technology and look into others and, and, and get back to, to you.
Okay. I appreciate that. Um, just to follow up on the committee requests, um, from before, if that could be added to the communications and safety plan, um, an aspect of AI powered, um, AI powered technology used for underground fire detection. You got that? All right. Cool. My second question actually has to deal with, um, clause nine in the agreement. And I read it and I'm going to bring up the law department because I want to really understand, um, what we're looking at here because given that, you know, it says, second sentence, generally the city in furtherance of its maintenance obligations shall undertake all emergency repairs. In the event, however, an emergency of an emergency that requires capital improvements to the city's conduit system, BG&E in furtherance of its obligations related to capital pursuant of this amendment shall undertake said emergency, emergency repairs, provided however that all costs associated with any such emergency repairs shall be funded solely by BG&E's initial term CIP obligation or the extended term CIP obligation. Now before, because we don't know who and what we're looking at here from a, um, incident command perspective, the city is responsible for those repairs. What happens if one of these conduit partners is deemed responsible or in the effect that they're deemed responsible, would the city receive a, uh, refund or would the city receive additional funds related to that 24 mil, I think it was 44 million that you had said we have left?
So I'll give you the original, the, the, uh, forever lawyer answer, which is it depends.
Yes.
It depends a little bit on who, uh, was responsible, what the context was of that. But I can tell you in not just BG&E, but also Vicinity's agreements, I mean, if there are, if it were determined that one of these other private parties or any of the users had done something that contributed to that, there are different provisions around sharing liability, um, you know, depending on what, what the cause was. So I don't want to speak to that without sort of knowing what actually caused it. But yes, if it were determined that it was something that, um, had happened from, that, that was one of the other party's responsibility, then yeah, that is something that the city would look to, um, to pursue with that individual occupant.
Sure. And I will say you're a good attorney as well, cause that's a trick question. It's like, but no, really, but you know, I'm, I'm really focused on, cause I hear some of the questions from some of my colleagues of, you know, the city's responsibility and what the city's responsibility is. I think that, you know, just internally, you all have to come to some sort of agreement of if that, you know, if this report comes back and we, there is some sort of shared liability, what that looks like for the current lease agreement and any type of maintenance moving forward. That's another, that flows into my next question. Any type of maintenance that exists within the current lease term? What happens when and if we agree to another lease term? Is that maintenance, is, would that maintenance be transferred over to the new lease term? Is it only solely for this lease term? What are the parameters there?
So I just want to make sure I understand the question. I mean, if we were to specifically with the BGD conduit agreement, if we extended it for, there's a, uh, an option for extending it for, for additional years.
Yep.
The provisions would largely remain the same. There's an op, there's also an opportunity for the city to go back to BG&E and renegotiate over the capital and maintenance costs that are in the agreement. Um, but the rest of the terms, I think the definitions, all the other liability would, would remain, would remain the same. But you know, those are all things that ultimately could be negotiated if we, um, if, if we wanted to, you know, have that discussion about extending the agreement with BG&E.
And the reason why I bring that up is because just realistically having something, having, you know, this underground fire, of course, there was a lot of maintenance that's going to need to occur. I am not confident that we are going to perform that maintenance or even, uh, performing that maintenance from a capital improvement inspective within the current lease term. So there's going to have to be some sort of rollover for at least the next two, three, or maybe five or even longer. You know, this is a 200 year old system. And so there's going to have to be some sort of continuity with that maintenance schedule.
Yeah.
You get what I'm saying? Okay.
Absolutely. And I think that ultimately, you know, that, that specific agreement with BG&E was, you know, was never intended to be sort of the sole vehicle for replacing the entire conduit system. I think it's a, there, it would take far more than the 120 million dollars of capital improvements to ultimately upgrade the entire system. It's going to be an ongoing effort. And I think it's going to be one that we're obviously going to want to work with, you know, primarily BG&E, but all the users to, to ensure that work gets done. Cause ultimately it's in everybody's best interest for, for that work to happen.
Sure. And so this next question is for MOGR and the deputy mayor. Once we exhaust that 44 million dollars, um, do we have some sort of line item within our current capital improvement budget for FY 26 and beyond?
The conduit funds, it's an enterprise fund. So it is everything that comes into it is what we spend on the conduit itself.
But earlier in the conversation, it was mentioned that once we exhaust that 44 million, the city is able to add funds to said fund. And so do we have any type of, because from, from the conversation, the 44 million is not going to cover the exact kind of maintenance. I just want to make sure that we are foreplanning for any type of budget years moving forward. And for us as council members, when we are looking at, uh, the capital improvement budget for FY 26 and beyond, we have some sort of understanding for that during the budget season.
Yeah. But we have to understand actually, we have a lot of competing. The, the only other way to do it is going to be the general fund, obviously. And the general fund itself has a lot of competing priorities. So as we put, you know, the conduit requests among all the others, recreation centers and police and fire and everything else, and we're strengths in terms of priority. So it is while, there is an opportunity for us to use general funds to do it. But at this point, the, the enterprise fund is the only fund that is available.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, earlier, um, Vicinity, you mentioned that the incident that occurred on the 28th of June was an electrical fire.
I, yeah, I, I think.
I may have misspoken. Sorry about that. I may have misspoken. I believe I heard it was in some manholes that had been identified for electrical.
Okay.
I should have spoken much better than that. So I apologize for that.
Thank you.
But it was just in those, those areas. So.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
Thanks for that clarification. Cause I was sitting here thinking about that, thinking I said it wrong. So sorry about that.
No worries. I just wanted to make sure.
The RCA is still in process.
Yeah. If we, yeah, if we want to make sure that we're finding the root cause, that we don't jump to conclusions. Um, and so my first question is a request from Vicinity and we can make this a committee request. Um, can you commit that when the city releases its forensic investigation, that you also release your investigation as well?
Yeah. I'm not entirely sure. I think Tricia can speak, cause I'm not entirely sure what our investigation process looks like. Uh, but.
Sure. We can share. We're not doing a deep RCA into the cause of that incident because our system was not impacted.
Yeah. Okay. And, and, but also based off of whatever the forensic investigation is, um, from there, uh, I guess we, we would need two reports. One, preliminarily saying whatever you found, but ultimately from the results, if there is something that
Yeah.
Vicinity had, may have contributed, could we also, uh, make sure that we hear, you're saying to the people of Baltimore today that we will do a full investigation to get to the root cause of exactly what happened?
Absolutely. We will take the results of the RCA that's being performed on that system. And to the extent that any findings point back to our system, we'll follow up on that a hundred percent.
And then beforehand, also whatever your investigation is preliminarily, could you also give us a report on that as well?
Yes, we can write an incident report about our response that night where we did not find any damage or issues with our system.
So there hasn't been anything after that? You guys came and said?
We came, we inspected, we did manhole inspections, we worked with first responders and the incident was isolated to another section of the street.
Okay. Um, okay. So next question is going to be to every, um, every player involved. Uh, when is the last full conduit, uh, assessment or inspection? Um, when was the last time it was completed for the downtown corridor?
I can speak for us. I know, I think Tricia mentioned in her, in her opening statement, we inspect every manhole twice a year. So every, it's twice a year, all our manholes get inspected.
Yeah. And.
If you wish, I can just add a detail to that. We talked about proactive maintenance earlier. We have a CMMS, computerized maintenance management system where we track all of our entries and findings and come up with, um, any work orders that might come out of those inspections. So there, there are tools we use to identify the equipment, where we inspect, how often we do it and keep records on that.
I'll speak to that. It's just as far as the, the occupancy, what do we have, what do we call it inside the conduit system? It is a conduit system occupancy. And this is a condu, continuous contract that happens throughout the year. So we do that and then we, it triggers another contract and another contracts. So continuous inspection of the or occupancy of the conduit system itself.
Okay. And for our utility companies, you guys have any answers?
For BG&E, we don't per se inspect the, uh, manhole facilities, right? Unless we're entering a manhole, right? If we're entering a manhole, our crews do a, an inspection of the manhole, which includes the inspection of our facilities, other facilities that are at risk and the structure of the manhole that we would turn for a safety to work in the manhole. We do a thermal inspection. Now for the AC network system downtown that supplies electric to a lot of the downtown system, we have about 300 transformer locations. Uh, those transformers have a device on their front, I'm called a protector. They are serviced and overhauled, uh, once every three years. However, the transformers themselves, we enter those vaults three times a year to inspect those, right? For, that's a physical inspection, making sure that the breaker operated properly, excuse me. And we look at temperature, pressure, uh, anything with our equipment. We would also do an inspection of the vault as part of our manhole entry and vault procedure entry. And then we have 275 bus and limiter locations. These are the locations similar to a circuit breaker in your house where the power comes in and branches out to the different mains on the street. We do those once a year where we take load readings to, uh, inspect our cables to verify that there's load on the cable like it's supposed to be. If not, we know we might have an open that we'll investigate or that it's not overloaded. Uh, and then in which case we would do an investigation to see if there's any trouble in it. So the downtown area, 275, um, various manhole locations once a year, every transformer location, which is 300 of those locations, three times a year. And then a third of those units are done once a year for three years.
Okay. Um, and so thank you for everyone, uh, for giving the answer. I, I really appreciate it. Um, one of the things I heard, uh, just at the end, Councilman Schleifer asked, uh, if you guys could share the number. Um, and you guys said that you guys share it and that's great. Um, but you also said something that, I don't know, it troubles me a little bit. You said that we will also share it with, uh, the, the city agency. And so before you even go any further, I just, just want to get my, my thoughts out because sometimes uh, they disappear. So, um, I feel like right now we're working in solos. Um, and it is my ass of the, um, of the mayor's office. Um, if we could convene a working group, a task force where every agency and utility company, uh, we're all working with each other hand in hand. I think that is very important. Everyone is doing their own inspections. Everyone is doing their own reports. I don't know how much, uh, is being shared, but what I do know is we have old infrastructure, we have an old conduit system, but we have big shiny new buildings that keep going up each and every day that will continuously put strain on said systems. And so, um, I think holistically, we have to think about not only, uh, you know, making sure that this doesn't happen again, but, um, also maintain it as we continue to build, um, as we continue to see this renaissance, that everyone is working together in one choir, you know, one band, one sound to ensure that when something happens, you already have the information and we can share the information to each other, uh, in real time as we're working together. Um, because I think that's going to be really, really important. And so we don't have to worry about finger, uh, pointing a finger at a different person or saying what type of fire it is. Uh, if we're all talking at all times, we can kind of mitigate uh, the situation before it starts. Um, and so, um, I guess we can add that to the committee requests. Um, if we could have some type of parameters or framework and agreement from, uh, the agencies involved and also the utility companies involved, to have some type of working, uh, working group or task force where folks are meeting, um, on a, the basis that makes sense. I'm not going to say every month or every two months. Uh, God knows, I hate a, a senseless meeting. Um, but I do know that it's going to be really important in the future as we continue to build, as we continue to improve our infrastructure, that we have, um, the communication component tied to this because, uh, you know, folks are, folks are worried, uh, people are really afraid. Um, and you know, we don't want this to happen over and over again, um, and where we're doing investigations over and over again. So, um, I, you, I think you were going to follow up on something I said.
Yeah. Yeah. Just on the point of the first responder, I, I know that the first responders do have our number. I think our colleague was just giving it. Just, I, that would worry me too, if they didn't have our number already. Like that's why we were on scene at the most recent one. So, uh, you know, rest assured that the first responders already know who to contact for us in, in emergency situations. Wanted to make sure you guys had that number as well. That was the, uh, giving it out. And, and absolutely with what you're saying, you took it out of my mouth. It was, I didn't get to it in my, in my opening statement, but I had the silo issue. I a hundred percent agree. We're, we're more than happy to be part of those conversations, um, really understanding how everything's working underneath of our city and how we can work together. Look, we're here to be good neighbors. Uh, you know, I, I said in my opening statement that we remain committed to that. So whether it be the report that's coming out or moving forward, the working group, we're, we're happy to be a part of those and, and collaborate however we can to, to resolve these issues.
Thank you. And, um, I guess just to summarize, um, you guys for the, uh, for the requests, um, you guys will give us your report preliminarily, but also when, uh, the forensic, uh, report is out, you guys will also give one based on the findings. Um, and then also a commitment from everyone here today that we will have some type of standup working group or task force, uh, in order to open up the lines of communication. We got those? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Gray. Um, I'm going to ask, um, if you could pull up the chart that you, um, made. One, I want to thank council services for, um, helping us pull together some really useful information. And of course, um, the department of transportation for sharing some of the data that we had over the last decade regarding fires, underground fires in the conduit. Um, I thought, I thought it was really interesting when I took a look at the, the data and took a look at the chart. Um, when we get it up here, you'll see pretty obviously what I'm talking about. When you look at the fires of the last 10 years, uh, there have been 34 fires. And if you look at the chart on the bottom, you'll see two standout years. Once in 2018 and again in 2024. Uh, 2025 is actually pretty low. We're actually doing quite well right now. Um, knock on wood. But, um, that, that, that screams something to me. Um, I, I, I would, I, I really think we should be diving into the locations, diving into the time of year that we're seeing these fires happen. Um, because I think there's only, there's only one thing in the conduit that can lead to a fire and it is the BG power line. And not to, I swear I'm not poking on you guys on this, but we know that that is.
not to, I swear I'm not poking on you guys on this, but we know that that is the sensitive infrastructure that can be the spark here. And so it begs the question for me, what is so different about 2028 and 2024 that we saw these significant number of fires? We don't have to have answers today, and I don't, clearly, we don't have answers today, but, but this tells me that this is not, this is not normal. This is not normal, and I don't even know that this is necessarily a conduit issue. It might be something else. And I really, as I was thinking about what could be the cause behind the fire, if you will humor me, I'm going to, you know, throw some wild theories out there, and I can do that, because no one cares what I think. But, you know, there's only a couple of things here. I mean, somehow, a mix of water and the power lines. That could be from steam, it could be from rain, it could be from any number of things, and that could happen by somehow that wire being pierced. That could theoretically be a cause. The other scenario is by which we have a charge that just goes through the line, and the charge can cause the line to be overwhelmed, causing the sort of arcing, Chief, as you mentioned earlier, that arcing scenario. Now, that doesn't mean necessarily that all these fires are caused by the same problem. They very likely are not, but what I want to make sure is that as we problem solve, you know, right now, we have RTI working on one fire. That doesn't, that doesn't give us answers for all of these fires, and it doesn't give us that comprehensive scope that's going to make us feel confident that this won't happen again in the future, and inevitably, it will, but we want to have as much understanding as possible. And I'm being very blunt here, because I want us to be crystal clear. The intention here is around safety, and we need to understand what's going on. This is a very difficult issue to resolve. It's a very difficult fire to fight, and I'm very, very thankful for our first responders, our firefighters, who are out there trying to figure out how to deal with these very difficult-to-reach fires. But there's only so many things that can lead to a fire here, and we got to figure out how we either work with BGE to protect those lines, so then they're not compromised. It could come from anything. It could be people working and not being very careful in our conduit. It could happen from, you know, melting in some way, shape, or form. Whatever the case is, I want us to work together, and I appreciate your comment, Councilman Gray. We need to be problem-solving together. We should not be finger-pointing. We need to figure out how to resolve this issue. A lot of people are counting on us. Our downtown is counting on us. Our downtown is counting on us. With that, I don't have any further questions. I just wanted you guys to reflect on that, and I don't know if RTI can consider this data, and maybe they already are, they're super smart, but as they're thinking about what may be a cause here, and I'd be very curious, you know, from the sort of charging perspective, if BGE would be willing to share some of the loads during the times that these fires have happened to our power lines, and if that had some impact on it. But I just, we need to figure this out, and I know we have a lot of smart people in the room, I think we need to get those smart people working together. All right? Any further?
Yeah, just one thing. So, you know, granted, the electric cables is an easy target to go at and say it could cause a spark, and it may.
Sure.
But in my 38 years' experience of working in manholes and leading people in manholes, it's not the only cause. Many times, there's contaminants in the city manhole system from other, you know, actors. And sometimes, there's just sewer gas, you know? One of the manhole events that we responded to was somebody putting a crosswalk down, and the manhole lid blew up, and it just happened to be sewer gas in the hole, the torch they use to put those things down, set it off. We found holes near gas stations with petroleum leaks, right? There's, you know, all types of things that do set it off, right? You know, the spark in a manhole lid could, you know, could ignite those sewer gases. So sometimes, like, the response that you have from the fire department, not all of those events, to my knowledge, were impacted through BGE's utilities, right? And I'm not even sure if they were all DPW manholes. It could have been storm brain, Verizon hole, could have been anybody. So I don't think electrical is the only cause for the manholes, right? If there is a fire in a manhole, our insulation's going to be damaged, and it is going to are, right, if you remove the insulation, so. But just, you know, there are other, there are other things that do cause the manholes.
I appreciate it, and I stand corrected. That's why no one cares what I think.
Thank you.
But, you know, the first time, you know, in 2024, when we were talking about this, my initial thought was gas, and it's not gas. So I think we've come a long way in understanding what's going on here. I think we still have some ways to go, and I just encourage everybody to take a second, really try to problem-solve, put on our thinking caps, and, you know, put the finger away. We don't need to point at each other. I think we need to figure out what's going on here, so it doesn't continue. I know BG is definitely counting on it to make sure they can continue to support their customers. We are certainly counting on it so that communications and otherwise don't go down, but I do appreciate that piece, and I want to make sure that, you know, as these things continue to happen, unfortunately, when we're looking at the causes, let's look at 2024 and 2018 and see what's going on there. That'll probably tell us a lot about some of the more frequent reasons why we're seeing fires. With that, I have no further questions. Any further questions from the committee? I want to thank you all for coming. I thank you all for participating. Thank you all for bearing my very difficult questions, and I look forward to the report that should come to us in the fall. This hearing is in recess. Oh, one second. Please, everyone, sit down. This hearing is not in recess yet. I'm going to offer an opportunity for public testimony. I'm not sure if anyone seeks to testify. I think we have one person. We have Rebecca McAfee.
Yes.
Sorry, Rebecca. You've got two minutes.
Is that working?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Conway, for having this meeting so quickly after the most recent fire that we had. I am a Baltimore City resident, and as a resident, this is, we're in crisis. This is a very serious issue that should not be taken lightly. I also have a loved one that's a Baltimore City firefighter, and when, I'm already nervous about him doing his job anyways as a Baltimore City firefighter. I mean, they have a lot going on, and when he's on those calls, I get even more anxious because it's not even safe for them to even be there. And then we have other people from BGE showing up there as well, and it's not safe. So everyone in this room, I appreciate you guys coming to this meeting and working together, but this needs to be expedited. Something needs to be done, and there should be a resolution as quickly as possible, because this is, this is a crisis, and God forbid, one Baltimorean gets killed the next time this happens. We're lucky that there have been no casualties up until this point. I counted 12 fires, and correct me if I'm wrong, from Chief Wallace's presentation, from 2020 to 2025, and we're still discussing this issue. So this, this needs to be resolved. It's not just on City Council, it's on everyone that's involved in this room, and we really need to take this seriously. Sorry to be a downer for the last part, what you said last, Councilman Conway. I appreciate that, because it shows that you really do care, and just having this meeting so quickly after the last fire is showing that, okay, they're seeing the urgency, but now we need to put something in place. We can't sit around pointing fingers at each other and that kind of thing. We need to come together, work together, and get this resolved, because I do not want a Baltimore City resident who, to be killed the next time it happens, because it can happen at any time. We could leave here, and something can happen. So thank you so much, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Spot on. I agree with you 100%. So we hear the task, and I'd certainly appreciate your testimony. Is there any further testimony for those that are here? We do allow virtually, we do allow public testimony virtually. If you'd like to testify, please use the raise-hand function. All right, we have no testimony joining us virtually. So that's all we've got for today. We all hear the task here, and I look forward to probably circling back once we have a report, and then we can all bring everyone back together. Thank you, this hearing is in recess.